Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Boot and Township Board of Education. Helped with the purpose of transacting appropriate board business. In compliance with Chapter 231 of laws of 1975, the notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were appropriately posted and made available to the following. Mrs. Barnaut.
Here.
Mr. Brandon.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana.
Here.
Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. McRae.
Here.
Mr. Mill.
Here.
Mrs. Nowicka.
Here.
Also present, Mr. Fratini, superintendent principal, we have more. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we begin, this is the first regular meeting that Mr. Fratini has been with us, so I'd like to welcome Mr. Fratini to the Boot and Township School District Board of Education. Welcome.
Thank you so much today morning, my third full week at Rockaway Valley.
And we're tied.
Thank you. It's not my fault, it is James and Audrey's.
It's good to watch. Thank you. And with that, we are beginning with a presentation for the Board of Education and district goal setting with Charlene Peterson from the New Jersey School Boards Association. Welcome, Charlene.
Thank you. I know, it feels a little weird not to have been here. You know, I've seen you guys for a while and we spend some time together. So it's probably not so much a presentation, it's really more of a discussion, right? About goals and so that's one of the important things we do once we hire new superintendents because goals are part of the evaluation process of making sure that it is clear to both the superintendent and the board what those expectations are for the coming year and then also to talk about the work of the board. So, you know, we had a strategic planning process a couple of years ago and so last year kind of the thought was that we were continuing to use those strategic planning goals as the district goals. So recognizing then the district goals are those, say, three or four things that we think are so important to move the district forward, that we're going to hold the superintendent accountable by putting them in their evaluation. So this way it makes it clear what direction that the district is moving in and then that should set the stage for what's happening in the rest of the district. And, you know, it should touch on everyone at some point in the district, you know, even to the effect of this making a difference, what's going on in the classroom. And then that feedback should get back to the superintendent, get back to the board, so that at some point it's touched everyone in the district. And then when we look at our goals for the board, it's, you know, more separated by all of the tasks to accomplish them have to be the work of the board, it has to be our work. So we recognize that, you know, there's more and more evidence that high-performing boards that work together with their superintendent can make a positive impact on student achievement. So we need to look at our continually look at our work and say, you know, okay, we're doing good, but what can we continue to look and say, how can we continue to evolve and improve and further focus on our governance work to make sure that we're giving our students every opportunity that we can. So having said that, like I said, this conversation really is more of a discussion about kind of identifying what those priorities are. And then, you know, should the decision be, you know, like sometimes if we decide either to go with the strategic plan goals, recognizing that the task to accomplish those goals would be completely different this year than they were last year because we're continuing to move forward and make progress. So part of that may be if we agree that those, say, those goals are still the direction, then we may need to hear back from the superintendent then like, so what are those action steps or what are those priorities going to be under those goals for this year? And the board may also have some thoughts about that tonight as well. It can also be that we say, you know what, we've evolved and perhaps, you know, we say that the strategic plan and the goal should be an ever-changing, living, breathing type, you know, document. So we may be in a different place now than we were a couple of years ago that may suggest that things need to change a little bit and that's fine too because that's what should be happening. But typically the goals are broad enough that perhaps, you know, like we tell them when they're initially put together, that the plan, you know, spans five years. So the goal should be broad enough that they are still effective over a five-year period. But again, like I said, there's things that come up or other priorities that surface, so we need to consider those. So having said that, you know, you guys usually have your goals on your agenda, right? I don't know, do you have them or I brought lecture goals if you don't have them as kind of a starting point?
We took last year's off.
You took them off?
They're all.
Yeah, they're all. I just pulled up June's.
Well, we helped them out.
Yeah, old meetings. They're also on our website.
Okay, so does anybody want to pay for coffee?
Please. Oh, please. I beg you for a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll start, guess, you know, talking about the district goals. And like I said, they were the, last year, they, we did use the strategic plan goals to kind of model what we, you know, considered to be the district goals. So we know then that there were three of them that we looked at. So the first one talked about the relationships of our families and the community in the Mountain Lake School District. The second one was our student achievement goal to create an academic environment. And it was, and I remember this during strategic planning sessions themselves, the importance of focus on all students, right? And what success looks like for every student. And then a safe and welcoming and inclusive school environment that promotes student curiosity and leadership while reflecting the values of the community in increasingly diverse world. So those were the three areas of priority that were identified in the strategic plan. So now I guess that the thought of the conversation is whether those continue to be the priorities. And you're welcome to jump in and share your thoughts at any point as well. We should acknowledge that if we kind of, you know, stay in our lane and say that we don't run the schools, we need to make sure from the person who does kind of what their thoughts are, you know, identification of the priorities. But then we also need to be involved in the process because we're the representatives of the community. So we have to make sure that if we're setting these directions and determining the priorities, that they're in alignment with what our community's expectations are for their students. So that's why this needs to be like a collaborative process where we both have worked together, each kind of from our own lane, helping make this then the goals that truly reflect the, we reflect the work that needs to go on in the district and, you know, we sit in alignment with what our community wants. So having said that, I don't know how you want to start the conversation in terms of, you know, where we feel like we've accomplished last year, things we've been working on, do we still think there's work that needs to be done in these areas? Are there any other things on here or even, or maybe even things that would go underneath these goals that we think are important for the next year?
So we're starting with district goals, not board goals.
Yes, yes.
So on the district goals, my, I'm just throwing something out there to get the conversation started. My thought was, we looked last year, we kind of polled some specific objectives within the plan that needed to be done. I still think we can debate whether they need to be there, some of them I think do probably continue. But since it's, you know, Mr. Fratini's for here, and I think it's like, I'll call it listening, learning, figuring out, right, what's going on, getting your lay of the land. There's an objective in here that says to hear and understand the needs and strengths of all stakeholders, including teachers, staff, students, and community. I think that'd be a great goal to have for the new superintendent to be able to take all stakeholders' opinions.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that. I am also in agreement with keeping these three goals here because they're things that I've identified with the other administrators that support these, particularly like doing a New Jersey NJTSS tiered system of support, which would then help to create that academic environment for all students.
How specific? Just a quick question, how specific are we supposed to be with our goals? Would you say that they should be more kind of broad and overarching or can we be quite specific?
So typically, you know, from, it can be specific, but you don't want it to be too limiting. And a lot of times the specificity may need to come, you know, there's usually two parts to this of kind of us having a conversation about the what, kind of what are the priorities? And then turning it over to the superintendent and saying, okay, now you lay out the action steps. You tell us how you're going to accomplish this what that we've helped determine. And then a lot of times the specifics are in that action plan of saying, okay, what are the steps, who's going to do it, what resources do you need? And then what are the indicators of success? How will we as the board know that we've accomplished this? How will the community know what kind of success we're having? So specifics are important in this process. It's just sometimes it's a question of where they best fit. Do they best fit in the goal statement itself? Or do they best fit in the action plan that the superintendent will provide for the group?
I'm asking because, you know, I tried to kind of think ahead of this meeting and point out some district goals. And one of the things that I think all of us would like to see is a very specific kind of increase in the percentage of students who achieve great level proficiency in core subjects such as math and reading and then kind of specifying that, you know, this would be this period of time by this end this month, is this too specific?
It's not, but that's probably a multi-year goal, right? Like sometimes to move the needle like that, like I've seen districts use half a goal like that, but it's usually a three to five-year goal, recognizing that it takes that long to make that happen.
That's kind of how I framed it. If you guys don't mind, I can read it and maybe you can tell me how you feel about it. So increase the percentage of students who achieve great level proficiency in core subjects such as math, reading, science, on standardized assessments within the next three years by enhancing curriculum alignment, curriculum alignment, targeted interventions, and the development structure.
So another thought too is sometimes I've seen districts say perhaps rather than increasing the percentage, we're focused on the growth and saying to look at measuring the growth of students perhaps versus a percentage. So wanted to look at, you know, consider that as well, so. But you're on the right track of if we're here to advance student achievement, we need to make sure that we're setting targets or goals to make that happen.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at academic achievement, one, and we talked about this in program the other day, look at cohort, tractor cohort, are they improving? Meaning the individual student as opposed to just the overall percentage. I think in general, if that's going well, if you're tracking a cohort and they're improving, you're going to see the percentages in the early kind of nature.
I think some of the things that I'm going to talk about in my administrative department, I'll address some of the things that we're talking about in terms of creating that academic environment. And it also leads to the increase in standardized test scores. Not only that, but assessments that they utilize in the classroom. These benchmark assessments that they're going to be using for Linkit provide also some data for us to drive the instruction, particularly supports. But we were talking about all students, not those, just those students that need support. We're talking about the NJTSS, the three-tiered systems, which will allow teachers to meet the differentiated needs of all the students in the classroom, tier one kids that are in the classroom in addition to the tier two and tier three. So a rising tide lifts all ships.
I think maybe what we can do is your goal, Alicia, aligns really well to goal two. And kind of we could reword it, I don't think we have to reword it here tonight, right? Just get the concepts down and then we could, so we could take the second goal, add to it that long-term plan to it.
I really like you.
But the thing is about getting very, very specific is if we're talking about academic environment, we can list a lot of different things that could help that academic environment, which is one of these like, this goal is very important because we can attack multiple things here. Different types of assessments, Linkit, differentiation, NJTSS, INRS process. So for us to like focus on certain percentage, I believe is appropriate, but I also feel that there are a lot of things that we need to uncover before we can get specific.
So is it better to leave it broad then and then let it get more specific from Mr. Fratini? You know, is that?
Yeah, would that be part of the action plan?
Right, right. Keep our goal broad and then let the specifics come from the administration.
Yeah, because like you alluded to before, this is a dynamic process. And as we uncover things, what we feel that something's more appropriate in terms of a program, any one of the things that I mentioned are even more. Then we kind of go down and find out where we need to go with that information. Then we can get more specific. I agree with you a hundred percent. We do need to increase the number of students or the percentage of students each year or following those cohorts to increase the percentage of those students that are needing and exceeding the standards.
So what I'm hearing then is to create a data-driven academic environment?
Yeah.
So then the next goal in another year or two would be the actual intervention is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Later on, like down the road, get the data, then intervene?
There are things that need to happen immediately. I would say, you know, like we've already kind of identified some of the things in terms of differentiation of supports and processes. So those things are happening immediately. But I do, I do feel that you're on the right track where it's like, okay, let's get some, let's get some other information, then we can get targets and things. But a lot of it, we, a lot of the conversations that we've had already with faculty include data. Like using Linkit and identifying some of the specific areas, not only for individual students, but for the cohort across the grade level, like what skills and concepts are common or causing a pattern that we can attack in terms of our instruction.
Alicia, you mentioned three things, let's try and, because it's not common, can you just, what were the three things?
Curriculum, that would be done through enhancing curriculum alignment, targeted interventions, and data-driven.
I like all those, like, I'm not saying that the academic environment should be limited to those three, but I kind of, I also like lifting them out. It's because the APMs, our community, could have a little more insight in what we mean by academic environment.
So yeah, I think it's, it can, we can expand upon number two, adding that. And I think that is the start of a really good goal.
Great, I almost, I would let you suggest that you could combine them in a way that makes sense for the district.
What was that third one? You said curriculum alignment, targeted interventions, and?
And data-driven instruction.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Sounds like that's exactly what you're already thinking, so it just helps articulate the goal.
One other thing I really thought about kind of mentioning this statement is most students opportunity for personal and emotional growth by offering a wide range of extracurricular activities. And I feel like this one specifically ties really nicely with the one that we already have, which is one of the things, fostering a safe and welcome issue at school that promotes student curiosity and leadership while reflecting values of community in an increasingly diverse world. So having those additional extracurricular experiences, activities, or even clubs, you know, additional ways of kind of finding yourself in the world, figuring out what you like, what interests you, which path you may even pursue later on, that contributes to you becoming, you know, more, to finding your ways in the world and being able to contribute, contribute better to that world.
I don't disagree with anything you said, but is it too specific for a goal?
I think it's really part of number three, right?
I think it's a kind of acting number three.
Yeah.
I think those are all fantastic.
Because I would expect that, like, Mr. Fratini to be able to say, maybe it is extracurricular, maybe it is something else too, like let's let, if you kind of come up with it and telling.
If you treat it number three, it kind of covers, like, that's a good.
Maybe it's more action.
And like it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps the action plan.
It's a great one.
Alicia, promote student curiosity, comma, leadership, comma, SEO.
Yeah.
Right.
Actually, I have one thought, sorry, about goal number two. I've really been illiterate about the specific kind of benchmarks. I think the, I'm sort of kind of on the last two words, like can succeed. I think that's, it needs to be a little sharper. I think succeed to the maximum of these students' potential. I see a little more than succeed, but succeed means like.
Where all students can maximize their potential.
I think there needs to be a little more teeth on what succeed means. I don't have anything actually right to grasp it, but to me it seems a little bit too big.
So when I think about that word, succeed, without the previous words in that sentence, it could mean a lot of different things for me, and of course we can talk about this. When they talk about the academic environment, I'm thinking more along with the specific content areas and even more specifically what we were discussing before about standardized testing assessments. So to me, that's, that's the essence of that one, where the students are engaging in these academic activities and lessons and performing in accordance with what we feel is, you know, sufficient. And therefore, if they're able to do these tasks and things of that nature and quote-unquote, understand, they will be able to succeed and get good grades and so on and so forth. But if we expand that definition of success, you know, then we start to spill into some of the other areas like number three, for example. So if you want to, as you said, like sharpen it a little bit, like what would you, what would you say? Would you kind of like change it to like?
I don't know, it's, to me it seems like, I mean, I think improving test scores and proficiency is a fantastic goal, but with every student doesn't increase their test scores, there's still a way that that's supposed to succeed, you know, that's defined it or define success or natural success in school.
Like how do you define success? Is it?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Individual potential?
Right, I don't want to limit it to say, well, the test scores are up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but that's great, but other students were missing in that.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. So what about if we discussed changing the end part? Or we talked more about what the student's progress is or individual achievements?
That's what I'm just thinking, or every student can demonstrate growth?
I'm not sure if that's somewhere.
I think that's, yeah, individual growth or.
Individual growth potential and, you know. Yeah, I think like a lot of times when we, when we look at these goals, we say, so everybody can reach their full potential, almost like it's an end game. And I always like to say, like, even with teaching, we don't want to be, we don't want to be average. We don't want to be the rule, we want to be the exception. But you can't live in perfection, you can't, you can't ever achieve it. It's a constant progress, it's a constant reevaluation of oneself. So, I mean, if we're going to change the wording of this to have some new true meaning, we have to really think about what do we want, what do we, what do we want it to look like? In terms of us seeing the kids and the kids seeing themselves? For that constant motion forward, for them to continue to make progress so that they can be on the path for their full potential, to self-actualization, if you will.
Yeah, I agree with the progress idea. Success kind of is a goal, like or sort of like, you know, succeed. I like the progress concept. Again, I don't hate you for that, but I like.
You're in good company, you have to lie. But I agree with you, that's, you know, it does seem to need some help. If anybody else has any ideas on that, I really appreciate hearing.
You know, even now or after the meeting, you know, usually Charlene accumulates the goals and creates her interpretation of our discussion.
Is that what's going to work?
But there's fun, yeah, so there's fun to, you know, to fine-tune. To fine-tune these things. We just have to get our concepts out.
Charlene, where does the action plan fall? Like is that public board, is it our responsibility for the district? It's, how do we put that together?
So the action plan is the work of the administration. It's kind of their identification of the how. And so while the board would approve the goals, approve the what, the board doesn't really approve the how. It's just essentially the administration laying out what that plan looks like. So that, you know, kind of when it comes time then to talk about the evaluation, it's, you know, as we're looking at how do we accomplish these goals, recognizing like when you look at the depth of these goals and saying, how could we possibly say like with student achievement that we've ever accomplished it, right? So it's essentially then looking at the action plans and saying, did we do what we said we were going to do? These were the things that we targeted for completion for this year, for accomplishment for this year. How do we do on these things? And that's really then how the board should be assessing then the kind of the progress of the effectiveness of the goals.
And even on the board goals?
So the board can hold itself accountable to that same thing of saying, okay, how are we going to know what we accomplished in our board goals? And how, you know, how are we going to move them forward? Of course, in some boards, the board goals are kind of casually just kind of set and kind of have a check-in and there's not really formalized plans. And some boards, it is a little more formal and they might like assign it to committees to come up with like actions perhaps that in the committee that it's most relevant to to bring back to the board. Or, you know, some boards that have a governance committee, kind of assign the governance committee then to, you know, want to kind of be in charge of the board goals and be identifying kind of what the action steps and the progress is on the board goals. So is there any more kind of conversation in thought, like, so we talked about, I guess we kind of started, so let's kind of do a recap, right? So we kind of started with goal number three, right? About the safe and welcoming and, and I think you brought up on the objective, right? That was under three, right? To be heard and understand the needs of all the stakeholders, was that?
That's right.
Yep, so.
I think we can reword goal number three. And I think it fits, what I was looking at was an objective from the strategic plan and just kind of updating goal number three without.
And then also talked about the extracurricular, you know, consideration could fit in there as well as kind of a step to have, how to foster that, you know, and promote that student curiosity and leadership would be, the extracurriculars would be a way to do that. Then in goal number two, when we talked about then the student achievement goal, kind of saying that our ultimate goal is going to, you know, we're kind of right now setting the stage to reach a point where we're going to be able to kind of identify like a longer-term kind of growth objective or an objective for our students to demonstrate, you know, increases in achievement. So now we're kind of setting the foundation to get there, right? So we talked about kind of some of the ways that you mentioned was the curriculum alignment, right? The targeted interventions, the data-driven process. And then, like you mentioned, the kind of all the tiered system of supports, right? And other ways of looking at data, like or using benchmark data as well, like the Linkit data. And then we also said that we wanted to look at kind of redefining that can succeed and kind of looking at more of our students being able to reach their full potential, right? Is there anything I missed in, in that summary or?
When you mentioned reach their potential, I was thinking along the lines of what you mentioned before about progress we discussed. So continuous progress.
Continuous progress, yep.
Continuously progressing in pursuit of his potential.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And also gives that, that idea that what we want kids to do is we want them to persevere, we want things to develop grit. And even in the social-emotional realm, we want to expand the academic environment, work with other kids, develop empathy. Kids make bad choices all the time, it's not that they're bad kids, they just made a bad choice. It's up to us to help them learn and pursue becoming better kids and making better choices from this day into the next kid, in terms of understanding, and then develop empathy. That's progress, that's pursuit. That's something that I was saying, oh, I want to be a better kid, I want to make better choices to deal with problems on a different level. Those skills, the tools that we give them so they can make those independent choices that are more positive.
Good. So, you know, we didn't really talk, is there anything under the goal number one about looking at those relationships? Is there anything in particular about that goal that?
So what, what I don't love about this goal is it, so it's strengthen and improve the relationship of our BS with the family's community in the Mountain Lake School District so that the expertise of each can be utilized to its fullest potential? I don't really understand what that, like, what do we respect to see from that goal? Like the expert, I don't feel, that's like an action, but not like a goal. Like use, utilize the full potential to what end? Or like, I feel like it should come back to a sense of, for the benefit of the students or for the community, you know, like it just, it doesn't speak to me really as something.
So I take it back. The item that I was talking about doesn't fit really, actually it wasn't mine, sorry. That's why I was kind of starting there. So that's why I was trying to take from the strategic plan, which is more, we read it again, that'll help and we can see, then we'll have to use it word for word, but it can be guided. And we can see, then we'll have to use it word for word, but it can be guided.
Exactly, either one.
Redoing one and to hear and understand the needs and strengths of all stakeholders, including teachers, staff, students, and community. So that's more of a broad goal that we could, again, that's not exactly how we want to word it, but that's the idea.
Do you think that Lake's goal is not, it's hard to come up with a name, same thing?
Say, Lake's? I was thinking more, this is very general, saying teachers, staff, community, other districts? Who could put, yeah.
Or partners, right, a kind of a partner in your work, right?
Yeah.
It's a stakeholder, I guess.
It is a stakeholder.
It's definitely more to view. I think that's more of a broad goal, but I think that's.
It's a stakeholder.
It's a potential there. Stakeholders are very broad. They're stakeholders.
So in general, it's giving Miss Fertini the opportunity to listen, right? And understand what's going on. That's really what I wanted to get across.
And they also, they did mention us in their board.
My personal opinion is just by virtue of the fact that if I have to hear and understand the needs and strengths of the stakeholders and the teachers, staff, students, community, just that in and of itself tells me that I need to have a partnership that facilitates something that's happening between the two school districts. I don't feel that I need to put anything on that list at all, for me.
I think that's fine.
Is the action plan, your action plan, it would have that idea by nature.
It would have, I would say. But I think that that's a broad enough goal for the district, right? After her age should be like, you know, she's graduated, but everybody else in the community, the families, the parents, people who don't even have kids in school, right? That that's.
In truly, we can order that, support still a little bit, but that was, everybody agrees, it's just that it's on the strategic plan. It wasn't there last year. So I thought maybe we could make your work one, replace it with something like that. And then leave that way, it's not the ambiguous.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts about district goals before we move to board goals? Okay, good conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's look at then what the board would like to identify for itself in terms of things that the board would like to focus on. So we'll start with last year's. So the first board goal the board had for itself was to continue the evaluation of the district's long-range facilities plan, safety and security infrastructure system to determine needs and the financial aid. So is this something you see as ongoing work for the board? Or is it something you feel like you've made significant progress that you would not need to continue to have that be a focus?
Is this related to the referendum?
Yeah, that should hit the referendum for sure.
Are we doing it again this year?
I honestly feel that, I mean, we have to evaluate that, of course. And we, because we've had failed referendum, the community is looking to know what's happening now. Do you know, like, are you going to be, so we have a responsibility to get back to the community.
So I think it has to stay, whether we do a referendum or not, I think we still have to figure out in the steps to look at it. I think it's, I think it's, yeah. I would just reorder it. I would reorder it because number, you know, looking at the board goals, number three should be number one. That has to be reached first. I probably would.
Well, oh, I keep, you're doing monologues, like, yeah.
Yeah, because first, first, you know, we want to resolve goal number three. Are you talking about, or are you even talking about?
I don't, I don't.
I feel like that'd be reworded.
But I feel that this goal should reflect that we need to reach out to the community to find out like why they, why they turned it down. And like in, consider them an important stakeholder so that when we go back to do another referendum that we have.
So it's a different thing, continue evaluation. Continue evaluation.
We're not just, we've evaluated it.
There's, is it viable for the community? It's more poignant.
Survey. It could be survey or incorporate all stakeholder assessment and assessment. Or in building.
What if I said the community evaluation is evaluate the community stakeholders regarding district's long-range facilities, et cetera, to determine the impact? You told me to determine the impact. Did you, so like, with the inclusion of the community stakeholder? What, I think it was, did we not include this community during the long-range strategic plan? And they don't know necessarily, like, oh, you know, we're continuing. I mean, I think you're saying it's kind of a, you know, someone who provides for your continuation.
Yeah.
But I think at the beginning of last year, we had been evaluating our infrastructure after our last bonds were retired. So it's sort of a process that was going on before we actually got to the referendum stage, I suppose. So that's why we probably continued last year. We were continuing and then the result of that was the referendum.
I would say, yes, we checked the last, that we achieved that last year. We did evaluate all the district's long-range facilities.
So it's in the same, but it's not that goal. I get what you're saying. It's communicate to the community.
It's different because what are we trying to polish? Because we know what we need to fix in the facilities. Like there's, and I think we know roughly what the financial impact is. We did a referendum of the bond, like we know. Like it's done now and the step is different if it's, we don't know why folks didn't like it. That's a different goal.
That's my goal. That's the goal I'm talking about.
So I think it's different than this, because I don't think you have to evaluate it. We know what it is. We know what it's got to face. We know who's seeking. We know roughly how much it costs. If it's related to that, I think it's a different goal.
We have to evaluate how to pass it.
That's the goal?
I think that's the goal. That is different, yeah. Well, that's, like you're trying, that you can't always predict. You never know how the temperature out there.
Well, we can take a step to figure out how.
As a district, you have to assess, as you mentioned, look at what really needs to be done and be convinced that that's what you need and then sell the community. It's not a matter of getting them all involved in day-to-day formulating the plan, but the communication is extremely important.
Or is it worth reevaluating the long range?
I thought of that. Or review, review ways to implement the district's long-range facilities plan.
Utilizing feedback. Or evaluate the district's long-range facility.
I like that.
Utilizing, I mean, you kind of use same thing, utilizing feedback, deevaluate the district.
And I wouldn't just make it, well, I guess in the action step, we'd make it more specific. Yeah. Because I was thinking, you know.
It's an article.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking you want to assess and survey not just your stakeholders, but the people who are actually working with them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so I do like Alicia's goal, like seek feedback. We get the, I think that's a goal that's achievable. You can put an action plan and seek. Like there's various ways we can seek.
I mean, complaining about the creation, what specifically caused the?
You can get it from teachers, from community members, from whatever.
We also have to figure out why people who didn't vote last.
Is it even more pointed to just literally say, seek feedback of why the referendum did not pass? Like, I have nothing to do with the facilities. Yeah, that's literally what it is. You need to value.
I would say, well, if I'm going to say seek feedback, reevaluate, right? Our facilities needs, like get it more pointed to what the community is looking for and then, you know, communicate to the community. It's not just figure out why it failed. You've got to do some actions after that.
And all the things you referenced here, like definite action plan. So determine the best, you know, it's up to, thinking high level, it's determine the best way forward to implement the district's long-range facilities. Seek feedback on why the referendum passed and then to determine next steps as it relates to long-range facilities. Something like that, like, because you're going to do the seeking the feedback, but I think we're more ambitious in our goal with this asking why, like what the feedback, if you want to pay him to do something with it. And that would be like the first, thinking of it like that's the first step of the action plan. Like, yeah, look, if we sit down, you know, and look at it again, you know, find out what happened. You know, review what we proposed, what happened, you know? Where were there any concerns from the stakeholders? And is there anything we can change? And then, you know, determine the best way forward to implement our facilities, long-range facilities plan, which could be another referendum at some point down the road. But all the things we're mentioning are very good action steps, you know, to accomplish it. Get feedback, you know, have meetings to determine, do we want to change it? Do we need anything else, you know, that's not there? Do we need to eliminate something, you know, all good steps? But, but yeah, it's almost like reevaluate or determine the best way forward to implement our long-range facilities plan. What is that? Well, the one thing to remember too is when the votes came in, a lot more in the community voting than have a connection with the school.
Right.
So you can do that, right? How you do that, to reach out to the board.
Right, so I do like the idea of letting them know our board goal is to get feedback to stakeholders, right, in the community. Including that. I mean, I know that's an actual item, but I feel like they should be aware that we need to reach out to them and, you know, otherwise we're not going to be able to pass them.
You know, looking at other, you know, after the dust-up, looking at how other districts may have done if people have more tours or, you know, the building. I know another district in March, kind of had tours before the board meeting, you know, for months. You know, like three months in a row where, you know, if you missed this, when you got that one, you do about it in advance. So you get, you know, you get people in and you see it. You know, like, here's what we need done. Here's why we need it done. But that's like part of the action plan.
It kind of doesn't always end exactly there, but it's a weird understanding.
But I think one thing that kind of needs to be clarified to John's point, I guess, is, like, what are you seeking from the community? Like, you say, like, as a board or as a district, right? Like you identified that the projects and the things that needed to go on the referendum. So what feedback are we getting from the community? Not necessarily like, is it, did we put the right projects? Did we've done the work to determine these aren't the right projects? But did we not sell it the right way? Do we not, so like, what is the feedback we specifically want? And like, so we said, we don't really want there all of it and identifying what should have been in the referendum, but how we should have gotten the need for those things across to them? Like, kind of what were their needs that we didn't? So I just want to clarify, like, when we say we're wanting community feedback, what?
I would disagree. I think we do want.
Okay, that's the word.
We determine that we thought were the best project. The community said no. So we need to know what is a no, a non-starter, so that we can get to the crux of what we really need to fix. I mean, we needed it all, but clearly the community didn't feel that way. So we need to repackage it, relook at it. We need to relook at it as well.
It's not just that. It's just getting people to vote who have skin in the game with this.
Have the population of the school didn't vote.
Didn't vote, right.
It's communicating for sure, but it's also getting what's the issue with, you know, what we put out there. I think we shouldn't get that feedback.
So it's our way to reword that goal. I mean, a lot of the things we're talking about are definitely action plan items. Is there a way to reword the goal to communicate to our community what we're up to this school year, I guess? Like we would definitely want to, I guess, reevaluate then the district's long-range plan to make sure we have it right. And, you know, and gain feedback from all the stakeholders and then determine the best way forward to implement.
Is that enough, Charles?
Okay.
And then if it came on, since this is like a facilities goal, it can always come down to that goal. Kind of to get it.
Absolutely, yeah. And yeah, any of these goals, you know, between now and the next meeting, we can, you know, put, eat and tweet with them, for sure. And that was especially important.
Well, I mean, you definitely have, you know, more flexibility and even more time to afford goals. I mean, ideally, the district goals, you know, because the superintendent's evaluation has to be done by July first and you're usually starting out in like, you know, Mayish time that you want to make sure you're giving the superintendent the longest window possible to start working on these goals. But board goals are not required, like, there's not a defined timeline for them. So we have, you know, a little much of a delay in data, types of timing. Okay, so the second one looked at, you know, the board goal that it's up accountable to providing the support and monitoring the implementation of the strategic plan. Still feel like that's something that you need to leave on here?
I'm indifferent, John, to this, to be honest.
I think a lot of work went into it from the community members. And so I feel that it needs to be there. I would almost double down on that and say that we would have had a strategic planning or a long-range planning committee that we kind of disbanded last year because we were supposed to talk about different parts of the strategic plan in the curriculum meeting or in facilities and stuff. But, I mean, it would be good to have another committee again to meet quarterly or every other month meeting even to review it with Mr. Fertini and see if we're all on the same page and does this make sense now and.
Or it could resign with the governance committee because that committee can be involved in the board goals, I guess, so you could kind of leave it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it needs to stay. We're not through the five-year strategic plan. We need to stay on, we're not, it's not mission accomplished.
I was surprised. It was like, it seems like it was a long time ago. It was only 2023 or only in year two. So let's utilize all the work that was done and say, hey, please.
I guess, like, to me, that's an expectation that's strategic plan. Like, is it a specific role of the board that's down, like, show up to board meetings? To me, I don't know if it's like the, that's why I said I'm indifferent. Like, a basic expectation of board is to monitor the strategic plans. I'm just like, all right, like, okay, we put it there, we put it there, but.
I think it shows the, it holds us accountable, really holds us accountable, which I know we should be anyway, but also shows the community that we're committed to it. Yeah, I think it's good to leave it on.
I guess then just to Lee's point, I think we need to be more action-oriented on it. Because otherwise, we don't really do anything with it. Like, it's on there and it's expectation of doing it. And then part of me is like, I don't want to meddle too much with what Mr. Fertini and administration are doing in the action plan. Which I think support and monitor maybe is okay. Like, when we start talking about like implementation though, I get like worried that, are we overstepping as a board, what administration's doing? Like, we're happy to support and monitor, like, give vision and direction, but I don't want to be telling Mr. Fertini or the admin how they should be implementing.
Should we take up the word implementation, the district's?
We could, just like we're doing board and district goals tonight, there are board and district goals in the strategic plan. So the focus would be for the board to focus on the board goals that might be in the five-year strategic plan. You know, that we, you know, should be actively involved in like the stuff we were just talking about. You know, like the facilities, you know, like as a board, we want to explore that, you know, from the board level, you know, all that sort of thing. And that's in the five-year plan. But, so I would say that that would apply to the extent that they're board goals.
Support and monitor the board's objectives within the district's five-year strategic plan.
I think it's a good goal, just to lead on board implementation.
I like that.
I like that.
More broader, just five years.
Yeah, the only comment I have similar is also disseminate communication in the sense of, okay, you've taken all this time and you've worked as board members on this with the community and the administration. So now can we as a board almost use this as an opportunity? Like our committee reports, where we have a report on the strategic plan? Because we haven't heard about it.
Support and monitor, support, monitor and communicate with the community.
So if it goes back to governance, then that would be coordinated.
They would coordinate it, I guess.
So, okay, so how about support, monitor and communicate the progress of the district?
Yeah.
I don't know. How you do it, what you do. You take what you say.
I think three to make life easy, just days.
Yeah.
I don't agree. Yeah, I do agree. I think it needs to be broader in the spirit of how we're writing all the other goals. Isn't our goal to have a, to negotiate a send-receive contract as soon as possible? And then the action plan is with Mountain Lakes? Or there might be other, other things that fall under that? It's Erin, and that's what we, I mean, that's kind of where.
What are you, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
You cross out the words, with the Mountain Lakes for investigation and you're, we're there.
Successfully negotiate.
Successfully.
Successfully negotiate and agreement. The district's send-receive contract as soon as possible. And then the action is the one with Mountain Lakes.
I think the name of that change sort of, I get what you're saying. I just don't think it would make a practical difference. I think I'm kind of indifferent to the change, but I don't think it would really change how we approach it anyway.
I totally get it. I might, I would have to tumble down on that, go with that for a minute. And successfully negotiate a successful agreement to the district's send-receive contract as soon as possible in addition to completing the building study.
Or you can make a feasibility study separate goal.
I'm just sort of, I'm just sort of like good with leaving it as it is because that's our goal. And, you know, I mean, if we fail that goal, that's a separate issue. But like, you know, my thought is like that server, our, should be.
I kind of agree.
But like, you know, my thought is like, that server, our, should, would be the most practical goal, and hopefully we will succeed in that goal, and like I say, something.
I don't think it's on the goal, but it's named the district.
Well, it just seems like. Seems still practical to do so, I think. I don't think it's necessary.
I think it's a good community relations.
Yeah, I think it'd be a little bit too much to get out, but it's sort of a very obvious strikeout and do it.
Right.
I don't think it gets you anywhere to do it.
So we're saying we're leaving it in or leaving it out?
I'm fine with it.
I think we'll leave it in.
I think it would be best to leave it in personally, because that is the goal.
Yeah, I get it.
That is our goal.
It makes sense, that is the goal.
And we hope to achieve that goal if we.
It's our aim.
If we fail that goal, that's, you know, that's a separate issue, but like, we hope that we hope to achieve this goal.
To Chris's point, do we have a goal to complete a feasibility study? It's a separate, it's a separate goal.
I know what you're saying, we don't complete it, but we need to ensure it is complete and reviewed, communicate to the community, is what I'm saying. We do not actually have that with feasibility study.
Yeah.
We need to make sure.
This is what we need, because what just happened, we have to work, that's what we need, action plan. But yeah.
I'm against on that.
I'm fine with it, the way, I'm fine the way it's.
So I don't see them write it down, but I'm not super.
Keep that one.
Okay, so we're leaving it as is, right? That's the outline, that's all it's done, yeah. Okay, and then what the last one, and what's the training goal that the board set to look at, it's onboarding of new members and enhancing of board governance, so it was kind of a general training goal.
So we already have a lot of goals, but one goal, again, double down on my, the goal I had for the district goals is supporting the new superintendent and the administration.
That's exactly a goal I thought we'd.
I love that goal.
Develop.
I know it's a fifth, but I think it's an important fifth.
It needs to be number one. I'm sorry to say, really. But a lot of changeover.
Going to the number two.
No, it's true, it's a lot of.
It can be one of the other ones, yeah, we could.
Number one.
I think it is number one, I think support to, like, I don't know how you say it, the transition or the whatever, the new administration to RBS ingraining them to, whatever, like anything we can do to support that.
Yeah. Supporting the administration superintendent is the goal.
It is, and not that we didn't support it previous, but I think there's always, when we have the turnover we've had with the superintendent administration, you need a little extra time, you want to make sure you're understanding their need.
And we could do that very practically, it's many meetings, these meetings, like, so I think it's a valid, I think it's a problem.
So do you want that in place of the training goal or in addition?
In addition.
I think, in fact, I saw it on another, I won't mention the district, but I saw it on another district, which I.
And it did say new, I saw it too.
Change the words around a little bit, yeah.
So, well, but this, support the new superintendent of schools and administrators' successful transition to ensure high leadership standards and promote continuity and student achievement. We don't have to have all that, but that was your goal.
They go a lot of work for me. Is that a district?
I think we can use that.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's prioritizing.
And I do think it's separate than the board training goal.
Yeah.
Right. It's in addition to, so now we would have five goals.
Yeah, no, it's like, there's been a lot of change, and it has to be, it's good to put that out there.
It just needs a little bit of extra focus, and I wouldn't say it would be on there maybe next year, but it should be our constant.
This year.
It's a recall. And then I'm going to complicate things even more. Sixth goal. We're loading up the board here.
I have one question about the training goal.
Yeah, I want to go back to training too.
There'll be new members, I believe, in this year on this board.
Well, less than.
So I don't know if that.
Or they're going to be on board again.
So you want to just leave enhancing board governance?
I don't know, actually, I don't know if there's anything to be tweaked there. I don't know the new stuff.
Yeah, we had talked about the.
Carol Lee Larson.
Yeah, the Carol Lee Larson.
Yes, exactly, I think you did.
That's how far we're getting.
Yeah, can we get a, get an audit?
And then we have to book you for some more meetings.
Yeah, I looked before I came, and I think you guys have, so you're like, you kind of have to start the process over again, so you have to get the 16 credits over four years, and I think you were at 13.
Oh, right.
So today we'll make 14, so then you'd need two more then.
Then we would qualify to do whatever that certified.
Come like kind of certified again, and then another 10 credits after that to get the Carol Lee Larson again.
So could we get it this year?
That's the Carol Lee Larson's master board certification.
So you could get the recertification first, and then you.
So was that a goal, just get that recertification?
We could get our board certification.
I'll tell you, next week, HONAC is getting their Carol Lee Larson.
Oh, wow.
And we used to be in a very selective group, and now there's people who are like lapping us. And there's a lot of districts who have that.
We'd be the first to get twice, or not?
Could we do Carol Lee Larson in one year?
Sounds like it's going to be tough.
It's going to be tough.
That's a lot.
Maybe two.
So do we just do this year just to be like research, like to be like eligible, whatever, I don't know what the term is, but that's the goal, so like, that means we just have to have.
The next certification level.
We have to have two or three trainings during the year, that's the goal.
So just last week, was part of my Mountain Lakes update, that Charlene was there at the board meeting last week, they just got their board certification for their.
For them, it was for their first time, yeah, but the board has not been certified since the year 2000, yeah, so that was the.
So they got recertified?
Well, not.
They got certified again.
They earned their certification, it lasts.
Like they went through the whole 16, like, they had to repeat the whole process because it had been so long.
Are there a lot of districts in that category, like they've gotten it once and now they're going forward again?
So you said there's 580 school districts, okay? So how many are certified, do you think?
So I don't know how many are certified, because like you say, it kind of comes and goes, and maybe they got it, but like you have to keep it up, so like to keep it up, you have to then, you know, if you say 16 credits over four years, then you kind of have to hold yourself to a schedule of kind of four credits a year, right? So some boards get it and then let it drop, so you kind of have to keep it going, but I mean, you know, while you guys, when we talked about the Carol Lee Larson, like, so there is probably, I think that recognition's been in place since 2006 or '08 or something like that, and like you guys were one of the early boards to get it, but even now, this many years later, we're still only maybe up to about 50 boards out of the 580 that have ever even accomplished it. So for you guys to have it a second time, yeah, that would be.
Is that just more state of the state?
That's the whole state.
A lot of them are in Morris County.
Yeah, I mean, Morris County is a competitive county, right? Because like when one board hears that one got it, then they're, they're like, so what do we need to do to get it? Because, right, you have to like.
Surprise.
But that's a good thing, because, you know, like my other colleagues will always say to me, like, how come Morris County like seems to have it all together?
Because of you.
I'm like, well, they, I'm like, well, they.
Take full credit.
I'm like, they put the work in, you know, like the boards are willing to do the work, and it makes a difference.
So I think.
So what's the reason then?
Is it to get recertified?
No, no, did you have?
Just I was just trying to phrase all that. You say just certified and.
Yeah, we need steps to earn board certification.
This year, right, and that means just another two trainings?
Yeah, I mean, there's other things, like we have to do like the policy, well, let's check like there's some other steps to it.
But it's accomplishable this year?
Yes.
Before June?
You had to pass CUSAC, right? Their documents, that's the board.
The board self-evaluation.
What was the bargaining unit?
We just have to, you know, our labor relations department has on our website like all of the different bargaining agreements, and so they just say, if we don't have your latest one, to make sure that you submit that, so that that can be part of that.
Oh, exactly. Is that coming up this year?
It's coming up.
So we got to add that one.
When is coming up?
Successfully renegotiating a new agreement with the TDA.
That's this year too?
Oh, my gosh. I think the end of the year, right? And by the end of the school, yeah, so, so this year we have to, the process has to be initiated, 25 negotiations, by the end of the year, you start.
Boy, time flies. I totally agree.
Is there a previous goal you've used in previous, you know, years ago?
Successfully negotiated with Boot and Township. A successor agreement.
Used constantly from the RBA.
Yes. We're just going to copy number three and replace with.
Are you actually doing the negotiations this year or just starting the planning for you?
I think we, I mean, in theory, we should.
I'm tracking. So I think we're copying. The goal should be we successfully negotiate.
I never said, I've never heard of a board that had six goals before, but you guys.
We're overachieving.
I feel much better on that.
You want to slack it off a little bit?
It's robbery, the goal is.
Can we get some extra credits towards you?
So Charlene, if you're going to boil it all down, and then you'll get it back to me, and I'll distribute it, and then the board can then look at it.
Yeah, I would say then the board, you know, similar to what you've done in the past, then to formally approve the goal, so that it's clear that, you know, it's clear to everyone that these are what your goals are.
Charlene, is there a board training for negotiations for teacher, like union contracts?
Yeah, our labor relations department.
To get on, what's that?
Zach Countess certification, let's do that one.
They can only participate remotely because they're down by Trenton, but if you have the ability for them to remote it to your meeting.
I think you'd have to take advantage of that training, or is it just for the?
I think the whole board has to take it together, for us to get the credits. So we'll definitely reach out and see if we can at least get you, if we need to, four credits. Typically four credits in a particular year, we will reach out to you and at least get you another time this year if we can.
Perfect.
And/or the people from Trenton. So are we all good? So you'll look at your, a version of that back to us, we can share it with the board, and then we can, I guess, decide.
Yeah, tweak it from there, and then.
If we want to, you know, run anything through any subsets of us.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you here again.
Have a good night.
And you guys are definitely going to have a busy year.
Not as busy as last.
That's true, it's all relative, right?
Some of us still have reelection, so we don't know.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I can get zero votes.
Oh, thank you again, Charlene.
My pleasure.
Okay, it looks like we can roll right into the rest of the meeting. We do not have a student representative, so with that, we have board business, I'll just do, I'll do those separately. Board business motions one and two, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second? Any questions, comments or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of board business motions one and two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions?
Sure, I'll give you one.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Any other extensions? If not, that brings us to motions A1, A2, A10, 12, 13 and 14. And a motion for those? Is there a second? Any questions, comments or discussion? And if not, the questions on the adoption of motions A1, A2, A10, A12, A13, 14, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to administrative court, starting with the business administrator, board secretary, Mr. Murray.
Okay, just a couple of items. On the school opening, we opened this year, it went very well from a facility standpoint, with no issues to report. Bus routes have all been running well since the beginning of school with only minor beginning of year items that have occurred. A paving project in Boot and Township affected the high school and RBS bus routes. Parents were notified, the students would only be affected for a couple of days, and that paving project's supposed to end, I think by Friday, was out in Wooden, Wooden Street, now by Boonam. Summer roof project, I have a virtual meeting tomorrow scheduled with the architect and the roofing consultant to discuss potential areas for the roof replacement that would need to be included in the 25, 26 budget to plan for an upcoming summer project. Since the roof replacement was part of the failed referendum, no state funding is available for the project, so the project would be funded through the district's capital reserve fund. And then we just found out that our lunchroom milk cooler died on us, and we're getting votes right now, but they look like they were in the neighborhood of $3,500 to replace it. So that's all I have to, through court.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the superintendent's report, Mr. Fertini.
Thank you very much. I think it's important for us to go back to prior to the first day of school. We had a meet and greet picnic at RBA, significant amount of faculty showed up, it was class three police officers, other representatives from Bloom Township Police Department and Board of Education members, thank you very much. The first day of faculty and teachers was on August 28th, and we were having lunch together, I was able to show up that day, and thanks to the AHSA, they provided lunch. The teachers worked very hard, I want to acknowledge them for their personal time and off hours preparing their classrooms. Special note of thanks and recognition to our custodial crew for preparing the building for the arrival of the students and for the teachers. I also wanted to give a special thanks to all of our teachers, parents and students for their warm welcome. They've given me invitations to stop by to see their lessons, invitations to see athletic games, all the nice manners, and a visit to a student's Monday and staff. I would also like to thank the board for welcoming me very warmly and for making me a goal to support me, thank you very much. I want to publicly recognize and thank Mr. Girtner, Ms. Picketon and Mr. Murray for their assistance to put me together, all the things that needed to be put together for my arrival and the team of new administration, as well as the other administrative assistants who have done the Herculean job of onboarding quite a few people. Tuesday, September 3rd was the first day of school for Bloom Township and my previous district, and because of the difference in start time and end times, I was able to be present in both schools and both towns for both arrivals and dismissals. In fact, it was quite a long day, but someone said to me, you really should see the dismissal procedures here at RBA, and it actually served as a model for another school in a different district. It was a very, very smooth operation, I was very impressed with the positive atmosphere and how everything was done just right. Again, I mentioned this once before in one of my statements, this is a testament to the attention that the faculty gives to the operation of the school and the overall support of the parents can't go unnoticed. One thing that I made particular attention to, which is very important to me, is the safety and security of the building, that was very noticeable. The second day of school here, September 4th, was my first day. Once again, arrival and dismissal went off without a hitch. Recession lunch were smooth, buses in and out, everything was, again, impressive. Kindergarteners go back to eating in the cafeteria, there are parent volunteers, all this in full swing, just on the second day of school. Teachers, parents and staff were involved in different areas of the building and invested in all of these areas, arrival, dismissal, lunch, recess, and again, just something that I took a lot of note of, or took note of. I met with the police chief, Kachi Bede, on Friday, September 13th. We discussed their program, considered to a new program, LEED. This is the preferred more updated program that many other police departments and districts[1671.41] This is the preferred more updated program that many other police departments and districts are using. We're gonna be exploring this through the course of this year.
What's it called again?
LEED. L-E-A-D.
Sure place there.
Correct.
What's the stand for it?
I forgot. He told me, but I forgot. We also used this in the previous district that I was in, but a lot of acronyms. The chief, John Gertner, and I reviewed and tested the emergency response system. Everything's fully compliant and under order. The New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, also known as NJQAC, is the Department of Education Monitoring and District Self-Evaluation System for public school districts. We passed and were designated as high performing according to the state's criteria. Thank you. For that, congratulations to the previous administration, the board, and all the teachers for achieving that. I can bask in the sun with that. I met with the Booten Township, I'm sorry, that's me. I met with the Mountain Lakes Superintendent. We've been in conversations and we're developing ideas to develop faculty and professional development, shared critical topics, and we're looking to co-present the Parenting Workshop on helping parents help children who are experiencing significant emotional events. We're anticipating offering this workshop in late October, details to come. We're also on the calendar to meet with our Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Mrs. Mordenroth and I met with the C-PAG representative and we're hosting that meet and greet on Thursday, October 10th, right here in the RBS library at 8:00 AM. A flyer is forthcoming. And that's my report.
Great. The Board of Law Enforcement begins, goes in by.
There you go. I was just gonna say that.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to combinations, which presumably is super tentatively, I guess, on the back page, if you want me to, I guess.
No, I got it. Any acronyms in this? Many thanks to the Homeland School Association for providing staff with a welcome back lunch during orientation days. Also major thanks for building gift cards, the random learning that made both days a lot of fun. Several eighth grade girls have been helping kindergarten classes at lunchtime, opening drinks, helping with catered lunches, and pizza day. We appreciate their assistance. Thank you so much to Kate Cooper, Community of Ena, Gio Ladone, Brian Matall, and Lucy Monreal, and Ella Wood Burge. On Saturday night, Marco Serra was honored at the Comeno Performing Arts Center in Morris County, recognition for outstanding achievement and leadership in the study of music. Marco has been a principal audition to the upper grade band as a percussionist. He leads by example. Marco was one of the first in the orchestra and the illusion about learning his parts. He is also supporter of his musician mates, and Wednesday he will be here. The upper grade band is lucky to have him in the corps one more year and will submit new records. Unless, at least, some of our seventh and eighth musicians play along with the Comeno HS Pump Band on Friday night as the herd won their homecoming lead. They learn some new music quickly and perform along with RBS alumni to the herd pump band. We're proud to have our musicians play in part of the pump band and report to it every year.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to correspondence, where people have a chance to rewatch that. That brings us to public section number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only, the second public comment period will be open to the topic, please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters of day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects to board meetings. These can always be most effective results with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chief and command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record and all comments are limited to five minutes. If anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items at this time, there being no one, that brings us to our DAs on the board, starting with the Mountaineers for Education.
All right, the high school's off to a great start. Back to school night was very successful. We talked about there was a lot of feaving happening the first few days, it's all done, it's beautiful, so it's very smooth and safe feeling now. Homecoming was last weekend, the clubs won their first game, the stands were full because it included members of the Rockaway Valley Schools' upper grade band, led by Mrs. Kilbar, who, the band played along the high school prep band. They, their club fairs have picked off and all the clubs are in full swing. And if you take a look at their agenda from September 16th, it's pages and pages and pages of clubs, both paid and unpaid, a lot unpaid by faculty members. I'm not sure how they work that all out, but it's phenomenal. Truly makes you feel that every student has a place. They have everything from drama, multicultural celebrations business, sports Dungeons and Dragons, it's like, it goes on. So it was just exciting, there seemed to be just a very good vibe happening at the school. If you don't see that, I have a ninth grader and a junior, so I'm very conscientious of like what it feels like for RBS kids to come in to the district and so far so good. As you. Thank you. Yeah, there was some discussion between the Mountain Lakes Education Association and the board at their meeting regarding fundraising, because fundraisers, they have to happen in the fall and they were caught for all, they didn't have chance to approve by board, and so they're working streamlining that and looking at some of the policies, because a lot of the fundraisers collect a lot of money that's to fundraising organizations, and so they're looking into this a little more carefully. So if members of the public want, have opinions, or were impacted by the fundraisers, they're welcome to provide feedback to the administration. So Charlene Peterson was there at the last meeting, so as she mentioned, they just received their certification, and that was pretty great. Just means that all the board members were up to date on all their mandatory training and they got 16 hours of training together. And I'm glad that we put it into our balls, because I was hoping for that. Creates a shared learning language and commitment to advancing student achievement. And, oh, at the New Jersey School Boards Workshop, there will be, it's coming up in October, and one of the high school students, Matteo Conforti, produced a short film for their short film festival, and so her film will be presented and I'll be talking to the artist. She's the only student from Morris County, so it's pretty amazing, it's gonna be screened by about 8,000 people, so it's a huge launch. Their superintendent, Poppy Tockers, is coming up with Brad Siegel, and October 9th, there'll be a morning one in person and a virtual one in the afternoon. They're interviewing for school resource officers, and the board accepted the much regret resignation of Mountain Lakes School's Vice Administrator, Alex Ferrero. He was a huge asset for school to the district and will be paying at the end of the school year.
School year?
No, sorry.
End of this year?
Yeah.
You're telling me it's not?
Yeah, December, end of the year, calendar year. Also learning more about the Sound Start Babies Program, I'm known, but it's a program for babies with hearing loss and it's operated out of Lake Drive School, so there's three programs there that are dedicated to Sound Start Babies. They were recently certified for the entire state of New Jersey, and they serve over 106 families. They work to create awareness and education for intervention. They've sent, then sent seven kids to Lake Drive School from their programs. And the cost for running that school has gone up, and so they'll be pushing out community and more partnerships and trying to figure out how to grow their program. And our high school kids do do service powers.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Features in School Wars Association.
Just really quick, the NJSBA Board Directors met on the 20th. I'm not certain how the version of the person, but just a quick summary, highlights. There's been a mandatory training change to the governance to train to focus on concentrating, that's kind of rolled out this month. And second bullet point, as we mentioned, there's a training workshop in place in October. The full agenda is available on the website and also a mobile app, often GSA.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to our standings for Words Association.
Yes, so the next meeting is next Wednesday, October 2nd. The theme is mental health resources for your school district. Will be three speakers, and the last speaker is from NJ Word Directors in Morris County, and that talk will be about stigma-free communities. In addition to Mountain Lakes being recognized for their certification, the additional, there are additional districts, Kettleon, Long Hill, Mendon, Pepot, and Union Charter will also be mentioned and awarded. And then aquatic township Board of Education, as I mentioned earlier, they are getting their LP Morrison Master for.
Surgery.
The office.
Thank you very much.
It's in aquatic, I didn't mention.
Oh, yes.
Wait, what is the date? Do you second, next Wednesday?
If intended, virtual or virtual?
It's hybrid, yeah. You have to, Matt, do I send you something? I'm sure it's there. Either go and look online or I have a.
Yeah, either the emails or the, you log into your account. Yeah, you should just log in, it's free. You can register quickly. I've been in a position where it's the day of a live.
Yeah, sometimes if you do it too late, it goes away.
And you can still show up inside if you really still. Thank you, still inside.
Can I ask a question just about the New Jersey Sports? And John, you might know this, but I was wondering, will everybody be registered whether they go or not?
We register the district, so it tells you to any of the handouts, anything that the workshop members can place down there. So you have available the district all those materials.
So any, even if you can't attend in person, you download the app, you can still access presentations and Instagram app?
And they'll post everything after, somebody's presentation after the fact.
Many of them actually post it before, okay?
Some do, yeah.
That's great.
Those that are going to contribute. Let's see, that brings us to the Educational Services Commissioner, Morris County, they met two weeks ago, September 11th. The team business, I would say, per generating to report from the meeting, by attended, and that brings us to the Super Ten Report, Special Education Parent Advisory Group.
Cephal, Cephal, we're just, just, you have the response admission, we're going to be concerned more than that, and you are Director of Strategic Services, and they're happy to announce, we're going to be ready, other way, we'll be joint, complete schedule for November 10th, at 8:00 AM in the school library for November 2nd. And additionally, there will be a Cephal, um, parent meeting for research year, and that's going to take place on November 15th, at the, uh, Church of Seven Years.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Super Ten Education Foundation.
The foundation's off to a good start, four kids classes have started, and the only thing is the event on the 23rd of November, the All Harvest, 7:00 PM at North Park. That is gonna be their annual. November 23rd, 7:00. RZD. It's fun.
What's it called, all? All Harvest, they say?
All Harvest. Yeah.
Yeah, they said that next year will be baby's party. They're not changing this year.
Yeah, with this year, they're.
Well, yeah, they probably. Yeah.
That's right. Eighties is considered a one. Think your parents. That brings us to the Rockaway Valley Home and Soul Association.
So the HSA is fundraising right now for Charleston Towns, you can buy around. For the HSA, and then trunk retreat is October 18th. All right. October 18th.
That was early.
Yeah. Just what they did then. And conflicting, homecoming, dances, all that kind of stuff.
Side note, I was in a nearby store and had Christmas stuff out, just for that way.
Buy your happy bear. Yeah.
And that brings us to Township of Punto.
Yes, a few things to report. Blue Clinics are October 1st from 3:00 to 4:30 at the Montville Township Menaceville Building, and October 17th from 4:00 to 6:00 at our Menaceville Building. See Township website for any details. The annual babies clinic is Saturday, October 12th from 9:00 to noon. It's going to be held at Rockaway Valley School, entrance by the flat pole. And any details can be found on the website of the township. And the last thing is the semi-annual shredding event is Saturday, October 19th from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Recycling Center, and it's sponsored by Tony Federico. And that's my report.
Thank you. And lastly, the Super Ten Report. Thank you. And moving on, facilities and transportation, I've got to go into the top end.
No, but, John, what do you propose today after you have your summer?
I will, I will.
Replacing?
Will, will sit and wait and then hold. And that brings us to finance, the financial committee.
The finance meeting, committee met, well, early just last week, to discuss the Mountain Lakes have received, it's the main topic, and then the brief with the DJ I go to around here today, which are all very standard.
Great. And with that, any motion for finance motions one through 10?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question, not necessarily about agenda, I'm about finance and generalities of ours. What was the facilities? Sorry, it's not even. Facilities, I have a facilities question.
Do you do this?
I can hold it.
Okay, okay.
Hold this.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on finance motions one through 10? And if not, the question is on the adoption of finance motions one through 10, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to personal, the first public community meeting hasn't been met, but we have personal motions one through three. May I have a question, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second? I got a second, okay. Mr. Murray has to pull that one, he's a. This is Bora. All right, any questions, comments, or discussion, they're allowed to be public. And if not, the question is on the adoption of personal motions one through three, it's to go home. Mrs. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Mill?
Yes.
Mr. Noah Wick. Thank you. That brings us to the program committee. My regret to report you, I forgot my notes, as I ran out of order, Mr. Johnson.
It was our first program committee with Mr. Petini, went very well, we discussed a broad range of topics, so it was just kind of setting the ground for it, but we definitely discussed articulation with Mountain Lakes, the overall, I would say, curriculum, gen ed, and special ed, and, you know, how things might progress, and, you know, what Mr. Petini seems so far. We discussed a little bit about NJSLA's boards, linkage, using the data around those two. And then I would just say that we'll publish philosophy, right, of what you're seeing, unless you have anything else to add. I know there were many other topics, but I didn't have them all down, and I don't have many direct.
I think you have. Thank you. Yes, and we'll put that in program, the program committee notes soon. Thank you. And with that, we have a program motion number one, any motion please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I just have a question, I'll stand up now.
For a minute, I'll send more time. And the other question is come through discussion. And if not, the question is on the adoption of program motion number one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any extensions? And we do not have any calls, questions this evening, so that brings us, well, we're probably should meet either.
We will be sending, I'll be sending out some dates and figuring morning or afternoon what works best, so we can try and get together, square up the, um, the, we had on superintendent.
Yes.
We'll be, I'll be sending under email.
Great, thank you. And with that, we are at open session number two, the second public comment period will be open to any topic, please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters of day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effective results with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chief and command concept. Questions may be directed to appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. If anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter.
Since you're all looking this direction. Heather Long, Nine Meadow, Brooklyn, Township. I guess I just want to say thank you to all the board members. I have our two boys here tonight, they're actually observing a public community meeting as part of their requirement for an equal scholarship badge. So I want to just appreciate all of your efforts, that you're here, you know, giving up your time for the students who generally don't see this happen and don't understand what really goes on behind the scenes, and that a group of individuals of differing backgrounds can come together and have conversations and come together and make plans and do it in such a civil manner and to get things accomplished on behalf of the school community. So thank you to all of you, we shall watch the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for the longest meeting. Yeah, I know. Longest one. Heads up if there's a sword.
We'll preview the agenda more next time.
Thank you very, very much for your words in the, you probably still don't know what we're talking about, right? But thank you for coming, we really appreciate that. And is there anyone else from the public wish to address the board on any matter? There being no one. Do we have any old business to come before the board?
Facilities. Facilities item, I think we have.
Yeah, facilities. I was wondering what the status is of the, um, the lunch tables, who were, that were looking at.
Yeah, I've got some, I've got some quotes in there, some of them are all over the place. I have a co-op price that, uh, we're probably going to go with, so probably at the next meeting, we will have awards to do it. So, right now, we're discussing timing, because they have to pull all the frames out of the wall and everything, so it's not, it's kind of a summer project, but we're trying to see if we can maybe fit it in, you know, two day project within, in one of the breaks or something like that.
How many, all of them on the wall?
We're going to replace all them on the wall. Just so they all match, we're going to change the color to match all the other ones, so it'll be a lighter, kind of lighter color. You know, I've, I've kind of band-aided them to keep them going all these years, and they're, they're safe, everything's focused, time to, time to change.
Those were originals or?
Um, no, they were replaced with some, long before I got, they were replaced at one point.
Twenty plus years.
Oh, they're more than, more than twenty years.
Forty years. Berry's having a, oh.
George Washington.
Oh, that's true. Twenty years.
So I was questioning that 80's thing, I don't know.
All of them, we're ready to go, and then, we'll go for facilities as well, and then, uh, you see, I don't know.
Sounds great. Is there any other old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board? If not, we have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues that were confidentially forbidden by in the Open Public Meanings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes, they may be made public, but the confidentiality of the subject is no longer warranted. The topic of discussion is Boone Township, Mountain Lakes negotiations or tuition agreements, and when we return, there will be no, no other board action, unless we're going to do that committee thing, I don't know, negotiations committee for BTEA.
Oh, yeah, actually, as we're closing out, there's two things I was thinking of, um, that I was...
This is new business.
Yeah, I just knew.
Four guests with this close.
I was thrown, I was thrown my logic to go into closed session, and we'll, we'll continue on new business. You did bring up a good point earlier, too. We just have to establish, we don't have to name the people on the committee, but we have to establish.
An-hoc committee or something?
Yeah, so, so, so we would like to create a negotiations committee for, uh, for the purposes of negotiating with the BTEA, or whatever we call it.
Yeah, it used to be a standing committee, so right now, since it's not, and then you could do it as an an-hoc.
Yeah. So we have to make a, uh, make a motion to create an an-hoc committee.
Negotiations committee, yes. For, for the purpose of negotiating with the BTEA.
Do it now or do it later?
Uh, you can do it now.
Because we just created it, right?
Yeah, we just created a committee.
Create a motion.
Yeah, we're creating the committee, but the, the members are appointed when I get it. And thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that motion? If not, the question is on the adoption of the creation of the an-hoc negotiations committee.